Would you call the vote? I mean, call the roll. Sorry.
Yeah.
Melissa Hunt, Terry Gattner.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have the swearing in of re-elected city council members by Judge Blake Burgen. Your Honor?
Thank you. Your Honor? How many times have we done that? Can you take a picture? I'm lost, like, again. You would all know. I swear together, I swear that if I swear or affirm, that I will support, obey the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and will discharge the duties of my office, fidelity, and not pay or contribute, either directly or indirectly, any money or other valuable thing, procure my nomination or election, except for necessary and proper expenses expressly authorized by law. I also swear, faithfully discharge, for the necessary purposes, my duties of my office, as City Councilman, City Mayor. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to make a special presentation to David Roberts. We have a little plaque here for you, Dave. to the City of Moore, Councilman Ward, one, from 2000 to 2016, on behalf of all the citizens, I want to say thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, would you recall the roll, please?
Jason Blair, Melissa Hunt, Terry Gattner.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
At this time, I have an item to proclamation declaring the week of May 15th to the 21st, 2016, as Police Week. But, at this time, I do, oh, here it is. To recognize National Police Week 2016 and to honor the service and sacrifice of law enforcement officers who were killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Moore Police Department, whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries, whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, over 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and have been killed in the line of duty, including one member of the Moore Police Department. Whereas, the 20,789 names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, whereas 252 names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this year, including 123 officers killed in 2015. Whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial 28th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2016, whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor, formally designate May 15th to May 21st, 2016, as Police Week in Moore, Oklahoma, and publicly salute the services of law enforcement officers in our community and the communities across the nation. In that, to further remember their contributions, I direct all city flags to be fun at half-staff for the week. Thank you. I don't know where the official one is. I'll give it to you soon as I come around. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, please, sir. Thanks, sir. Just a couple of activities, perhaps, we're going to highlight for Police Week. And one of the key things down there was the number of deaths that we had a lot of for. The deaths from firearms, deaths as high as 0, 130 percent. And, of course, that's a, you know, it's a shocking figure, but just shows you, I guess, where we're at today and the emphasis on Police Week. But some of the activities, and I've left you some handouts up there that you can look at at some point, but one of the big things is, of course, the kickoff day, and 16th of May is the chili cook-off, and a fundraiser for the Oklahoma Law Enforcement Officer Memorial. And we're going to have some VIP judges to include Sherri Cole, W, women's basketball coach. The mayor's going to be there. I'm happy to go over from Channel 5, or I'm a DJ from AJ103. So we'll have some other folks there to get some people in, hopefully. And, see, the memorial service will be on the 19th at 4:00 p.m. at the PD. Invite everybody out there for that. And the other one on the 25th of May, we're going to ride our bikes up to the memorial to raise some more funds. We have a GoFundMe account attached for that. But so far, Norman PD, Tulsa, Rodeo, and Golden State, you're going to ride boots that day. So just, that's just some of the highlights we have, and invite everybody to come to any of all events, and I'll hang around, ask you, of course, to answer your questions.
I do have one comment on the chili.
Yes, sir.
The entry people will have to eat three bites of their own chili before I try it. And if they don't, they're not only disqualified, they'll be arrested. I've done this before.
Chief, don't make a question that may agree, but we told him to bring some tongs as well, so.
Yeah, well, that's not a problem. I'm just not eating Alpo chili. Thanks. All right. This time, item two is the consent docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held April 18th, 2016. Item B is receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held March 8th, 2016. Item C is receive the minutes of the parks board meeting held January 5th, 2016.
Make sure the motion is approved.
I got item D, sorry. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015, 2016 in the amount of $3,829,131.41. All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Okay, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider approval of the final plan for VRA Moore located in the northeast quarter of Section 23 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being south of Southeast 4th Street and Western Eastern Avenue. Application by VRA Moore LLC Jason Keen Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7-0. This is also in Ward 1.
Mayor, Council, this site is located south of Southeast 4th Street and west of Southeast 10th Avenue. The property was Zoned C3 as of course of use for mini-store facility in 2011. Since that time, the property has remained vacant. The applicant seeks final planning approval on a portion of that property that was rezoned for mini-store to construct a Goodwill retail store, which is allowable if you send the seat rezoning. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. Access is available from Southeast 10th Avenue. This property is not located within a floodplain, and on-site detention, stormer detention is required. Staff agreement is approval of this final plan. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments or questions on this item? No, would you call for the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item number four is consider rezoning application number RZ 936, located in the southeast quarter of Section 3 Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being north of Northwest 27th Street and east of Woodland Drive from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to C3 General Commercial District, and approve ordinance number 81516, application by Gary and Nora Jones. Planning Commission recommended approval of this item 7-0. This is in Ward 2.
Mayor, Council, this property consists of approximately one acre, is located north of Northwest 27th Street and east of North Shields Boulevard. There is an existing residential home, the applicant is proposing to rezonate the property to C3 General Commercial to market for sale. The existing house structure will be removed prior to commercial redevelopment. Public water and sewer are available to serve the site. Access will be from Northwest 27th Street. The coverage of plan calls this location to be deemed commercial, therefore, a plan amendment is not required. Due to the growth trend in this area and based on the compliance of the coverage of plan, staff does recommend approval of this application contingent upon removal of the existing residential structure prior to commercial redevelopment. Do you have any questions, or I'll be happy to answer them?
I would just add that whenever something is built there, ensure that there's adequate drainage. Another thing we always do, but get a lot of calls from people that are over in that division about drainage or what trees, just the lack of storm treatment, so we could just, just in the future, address that. I make motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Second. All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other comments on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a sponsorship agreement with Raising Canes for Happy Trails Dog Park and accept donations of three-shaped structures for said park.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, Council, partnerships are critical of local parks, and we've developed several of those the last few years. One of those partners is Raising Canes. They participate in money, sun dance, and water dance, and other events throughout the year, and so we're grateful for them. As we developed the dog park, they approached us very early on about partnering with us and sponsoring the dog park in some way, and so they agreed to donate, to purchase three-shaped structures, 15 by 15, in size 15 feet to 15 feet. We'll go inside the dog park, and the total amount of donations, 12,000, we have $15,000. Jared and Edward, the President Daniels here, so if you have any questions with him, or I would be happy to, very appreciative of him, and we've developed a very good relationship with him, so without the questions.
Okay. Just want to say thank you very much. That's excellent.
We appreciate it.
Love the chicken, too, by the way. Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to accept it?
Make a motion to accept it.
All right, thank you. A second. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider approval of a service agreement with Motorola Solutions Incorporated as a sole source provider in the amount of $54,247.56 for maintenance and service on communications at the EOC center radio console equipment.
Mayor, this essentially is a housekeeping item. It's just a maintenance, a maintenance contract for the EOC and the communications software and console that was installed in the public safety center. We have these kinds of agreements on all of our major systems.
Okay. Randy, this is one of those questions I have to ask you. Is it your opinion that we can do a sole source bid on this equipment?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
We did bid out the equipment originally. This is just for.
Maintenance.
The maintenance agreement, just as a clarification.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider ordinance number 81216, amending Part 8, Chapter 2 of the Moore Municipal Code by creating Sections 8-210 through 8-216, establishing a duty to remove dead or diseased trees, providing for notice and a hearing prior to abatement, providing for determination and assessment of cost, and providing for a collection of lean, providing for severability, and providing for repealer.
Mayor, Council, a while ago, I was approached to draft an ordinance to cover the diseased and dead trees throughout the City of Moore, those dead and diseased trees, creating a hazard, creating safety concerns to the public. And so I crafted this ordinance, which provides that a notice would go out to the homeowner, telling them that the city receives a dead diseased tree, they need to take action, they need to remove it if that's not done. There's a hearing somewhat like a confirmation, where the city has its proof of a dead diseased tree, the homeowner would have to come in and prove that it's not, and then it would be required to move. If they don't do it at their own expense, then it would be abated, like our other payments, and payment would be to the City of Moore, or through a lean enforcement process.
Is this mainly be complaint-driven, or do we expect code for some why I'm looking for things?
I doubt it.
I don't think it'll be looking for things. It's mainly going to be upon complaint, and it's primarily because of the storm areas, and there's these dead trees, and clearly dead trees, again, primarily on vacant lots, but not always, but primarily in those storm areas that really, they are a nuisance, and they're just ugly.
There may be, there may be obvious situations, and then there's going to be those situations that, you know, are not obvious, so those would be complaint-driven, because close to COVID, or a pandemic, and have access, you know, noticing what appears to be a dead tree.
Well, one of the things, too, when they die and fall over into electric lines and knocks the rest of us electricity out, and that's really, shouldn't be admin because we didn't take action on it.
Those concerns could be, you know, lessened by having those observations and people calling.
But there's several round down that are actually overlapping the highway or the roads. It could fall over at some point, and it's like, I don't know if we would be liable for that or not, but I would think the homeowner would, but during the right of ways, I don't know. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve.
Okay, thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice mayor.
I'd make the motion to nominate Jason Blair.
As always, the guys that misses the, the vote.
I'll teach you.
Okay. We have a motion in a second for Jason Blair. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Congratulations, Jason. Okay. Item number nine is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a member in alternative, alternative to serve with the ACOG Board of Directors, Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, Garber Wellington Policy Committee, and the 911 Association Board of Directors. And these meetings are basically held one after another at ACOG. Mark, you're still on this? You still want to do it?
Yeah, I'd love to do it, and I'd also like to recommend that alternate or alternates, and this has been the trend at ACOG, that the alternates are any of the elected officials that serve on the council. So if I'm gone, and there's times that I can't make it, that anybody could go and represent the City of Moore. When we're not there, we get 24 votes, so it's, it's not just one vote, and they have to have so many to have a forum. So just like, like us, they have to have a forum to pay their bills, and it just meets once a month.
Adam, would you like to be the alternate?
Yeah.
I want the whole council.
The whole council to be the alternate?
The whole council can be an alternate.
Okay, but.
So the way, we'll read the ACOG, Marchham, and then alternates will be any elected official on the city council.
Okay. Yeah, it is important to show up up there because you do get a lot of votes for Moore. And a lot of them don't show up from other cities, so we get their bridge money, too.
And I'm, and, and they'll begin to also send the alternates, all of us, the agendas about the meeting, and if anybody, just the three of us, but if anybody wants to go, come with me, and I'll show you what we do. It's a lot like this, but then we can be a little bit familiar with it and how, how their procedures are for votes and discussions and so.
ACOG's a really critical group for us to be represented on, because this is where the federal dollars that are, come down through to the state for road transportation projects in the metro area. ACOG, this group is the ones who decides where those funds go. So it's, and they do the regional transportation planning.
I was on that board for 16 years.
So it's critical we have continued good representation.
Yeah, I appreciate you doing that, and I know it takes a lot of time.
Yeah, it does. Okay, we have a motion? Do we have a second? Who made the motion?
I'll, I'll sign it. Did I nominate myself?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number 10 is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held April 18th, 2016. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2015, 2016, or excuse me, 2015, 2016, in the amount of $1,252,734.41.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second?
Second, I'll second.
Okay. Would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chairman of the trust.
I would nominate Jason Blair.
Okay.
And I'll second him.
All right, thank you, thank you. We have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 12 is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the trust.
I would nominate Councilman Webb.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Gattner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Congratulations, Adam. So, item number 13. Don't waste your money. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, don't get too excited. Item 13 is consider the designation and appointment of Brooks Mitchell, the city clerk, city treasurer of the City of Moore, to serve as the Assistant Secretary, non-voting of the authority for purposes of executing any and all documents pertaining to authority business upon approval by the authority.
Mayor, we did this a few years ago with Jim, and it was primarily just for conceit, convenience purposes, and if there was to be a bond issue or any kind of official documents that need to be signed by the secretary of the trust, and that person's not available, these would be documents that would already have been approved by the trust, so it's just really just a matter of. So it's just really just a matter of formality and for sake of convenience. It was recommended to us by Terry Hawkins a few years ago, again, just for the, for the sake of being able to have an extra signatory if we needed it.
Okay. Do we make?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Yes.
Terry Cavan?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes. Thank you, Brooks. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item fourteen is A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held April eighteenth, two thousand sixteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for F Y two, twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen in the amount of two hundred and forty thousand, five hundred and seven dollars, forty-six cents.
Make motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Now we have the bills paid. Would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavan?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number fifteen is consider if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the Moore Risk Management Board.
Please, Melissa Turner.
Yeah.
I nominate this.
Second.
Okay. Shouldn't miss this meeting. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Terry Cavan?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. Item number sixteen is consider if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the Moore Risk Management Board.
Well, Adam?
Yeah.
Uh, Terry doesn't got one.
There you go. I didn't have it.
Second.
Terry didn't get one.
Yeah. No, no, I got, I got one coming.
Okay.
If I can keep the one I've got.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Terry Cavan?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene a special meeting of the Moore Economic Development Authority. Sorry, Terry, this, I forgot about that.
Item seventeen is the row call. Call the row, please.
Jason Blair? Melissa? Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Terry Cavan?
Here. Item eighteen is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held March twenty-one, two thousand sixteen. Make motion to accept.
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Terry Cavan?
Yes, item passes. Item nineteen, consider and deemed appropriate, accept nominations, select a chair of the authority.
I would nominate Terry Cavan.
Second. Any other comment?
That is the one you wanted to keep, right?
That is the one.
Just making sure. No, there's one below it.
Call the vote, please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Terry Cavan?
Yes, item passes. Item number twenty, consider and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations, select a vice chair of the authority. Who's been the vice chair?
David Watson.
David was.
David Watson.
Because I've been with this once in a while.
Yeah.
I can do it if you want me to. Um, okay, I nominate Adam Webb. Second. Oh, I can't do that.
Second, I'll do it. It's like, wait.
Sorry. Call the vote, please.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Terry Cavan?
Yes, item passes. This time, we'll recess the special Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council.
Wait, wait, you missed twenty-one.
I missed the twenty-one? I should did. Item twenty-one, consider and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations, select a secretary of the authority.
I nominate Mark Ham.
Second. Sorry, I can't do that.
I'll second.
Yeah. Any other nominations? Would you call for the vote, please?
Lynn Lewis?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Terry Cavan?
Yes. Okay, item passes. This time, we will recess the special Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene, reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item twenty-two is new business, let the record reflect that all the members that were present before are still present. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Would anyone like to? Any items from the city council, please?
I just have a couple of quick things. And I let you guys, uh, handouts. One, this one is legislative, a thing, a report from Hancock. And it's just about bills that are here in the House and the Senate pertaining to municipal government. And if you work time to, to read over those. And then there's also another one from Oklahoma Municipal League. It's about the, lots of different bills and things that are, that are going through, uh, the Capitol. Read through those, they can call, will impact our municipal government somewhere or another.
Yeah, thanks for doing that, by the way.
Yeah. It's something that, that, uh, you know, we'll get with Melissa and Jason, just when they're here. I've been serving on the Legislative Committee for the, for the municipal league. And that's not a, a position that we have to nominate or it's just, uh, the mayor's been doing that and want to be involved. They meet primarily just during the legislative session. But I can't been able to go to all of those because of ACOG and, uh, R T A and so I had to be careful about being away from work. So if anybody's interested, they meet once a month, usually for a couple of hours and busy being, and they'll have other representatives come over and explain and talk about, and it's good just for more to be in the loop on what's going on at the Capitol. Again, things that will impact us. So if anybody's interested, I'd be glad to, they have a meeting this Wednesday. And the good thing about O M L, they, they have snacks.
They do. They're good too.
Yes, they are. They're good. So if anybody'd like to go, I'd be glad to take them there and audition and if you don't, part of that. ACOG, uh, is going to be moving right now. They meet in Bricktown. Their last meeting, uh, last Thursday, the board approved for the executive director, John Johnson, to enter to negotiation with Oklahoma County for a building that they have up on Northwest Forty-second Lincoln, or could be one of East Forty-second Lincoln. It's the, uh, the, um, Oklahoma County Election Board building, uses half. And then there's the other half of the building is currently used by Langston University for Oklahoma City campus. But they're getting ready to move to another facility. So they have about thirty-eight thousand square feet that's available. ACOG won't need that much, but it's looking to be in great facilities and great shape. And that's where ACOG meeting should be sometime this summer, once they finish their, uh, negotiations, get all that kind of stuff worked out. And the, Mr. Eady, would it, would it be possible to invite somebody from the N S F or anything northern to come to the council meeting? And if they could talk with us about the rail crossing at Twelfth Street? I've got numerous calls about that. And I know, uh, the city is making them aware of that crossing and I, I would tell the people, uh, what the response is and they know about it, come to work on it. But it'd be great if they would just come and maybe speak to us about that if they're available. And I know, uh, sometimes the railways, they're very busy. So I hope they can make it and talk with us. I want the citizens to know that we really are trying to address that and fix.
When you, I mentioned that to me earlier by email, Mark. I did already email them, already they've emailed me back and said they would, uh, do that.
Okay.
And we haven't set a date yet, but at some point in the near future.
Okay. That's perfect then. And I was going to ask, is it fair, the Fairmore Park, the Dairy Queen Park? Where are we at with that? I know it looks like most, all the demolition has been done over there. When is that going to start?
What we did was, county crews were available this winter to do the demo. And so we took advantage of that. By doing that, it saved us probably about fifty to seventy-five thousand dollars in, in courses and sales tax. I haven't been to the park because they did, they love Charlie. Later this year, we will begin work out. What we're doing right now is engineering going, going on to create a water feature in that, in that drainage area that borders the park. We will start developing an R and P playground and splash pad during the coming weeks. And so that will go on through the summer. So, uh, I would think, uh, later this year, after, during the fall, uh, late fall, we should start construction. It will be a, uh, it's going to be a major project. It's probably going to be about over a million dollars to a million and a half dollars. And it will be a splash pad, playground, uh, half mile walking trail, uh, road, parking, building, picnic shelters, and then fresh water.
It's water fountain.
Yeah.
So you're, you're telling us you're adding the splash bed built in the winter?
Well, it's, we won't use it in the winter.
I'm just messing with you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd.
And then one last thing I saw on, uh, social media, Facebook, assistant to Eddie and his crew. They were over at the Foxfire Edition working on some street signs in the neighborhood, watchers, I'm not exactly sure. Putting up signs and the system just happened to picture and said thanks to the, uh, people that are, that were doing that. So we always hear the negative, not necessarily all good things. So it's a small thing, but people do notice and they appreciate it. So thank you.
In, in that regard, just a shout out to Eddie. Eddie is our employee that's done our signs, uh, for how long, Richard? How long?
Seventeen years.
Seventeen years. He's going to be retiring this week. So, uh, uh, we're going to miss him. He's been a great employee for us. So there's a retirement, uh, when is that? It's Friday, isn't it, Richard? Friday, the retirement thing is Friday.
It's Friday, it's at, at the Blue Harbor Works.
Yeah, so if anybody would like to come, they're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Sure. Anything else, anybody? Steve? Any items from the city?
We, um, we're probably about ninety-nine percent, ninety-eight percent, something like that, done with the budget. We're going to have the budget to present, uh, here pretty quick. So, um, like to see if it's possible, maybe even next Monday evening, to have a, a, um, special meeting and a budget study session, will that work with your calendars? Is what I need to find out.
I'm available. I'm, I'm good. What day is that?
What is today? The second, so it'd be the ninth?
I won't be here.
Monday? Oh, you're going up to D C, I'm sure.
I have to go see the president.
Yeah. When, when are you going to be back?
The eleventh. I didn't see.
When is it? Let me look at calendars, uh, to make sure, and I'll get with you all, but we need, we want to do that within the next week or so.
Okay.
You can have it without me.
Uh, no. Don't want to have the budget.
It's a good try on my part.
Good, good, good try, that's right. Well, but I'll, I'll get with you all and set up a date to perhaps that following Thursday, uh, something like that. But we need to do it, um, pretty quick.
Okay.
Um, we received the applications for the vacant council position for the last, uh, almost two weeks now. We've got six.